Through the department.
It'd be significantly less than that.
Twenty, I mean, can you give me a, any kind of ballpark?
Um, it's thousands as opposed to forty-five thousands.
Well, if you could have those numbers sent over, I'd like to see those through council. The next question-
We, we won't know those numbers until after other projects done. I mean, we can do an estimate of what the time would be associated with and the equipment.
Yeah, I just figured Matt must have budgeted man hours that were taking off other projects, because we didn't increase our budget in street department.
Our street department is incredibly capable of balancing a lot of different projects throughout the year. This is just one of those moments where we're calling upon them to help us have a cost savings uh for, for the Dorney Plaza renovation.
Okay, so we don't have that number. The next question was the abutting properties on Dorney Plaza. What was the decision through the commissioner's office? How are they handling that? What are those property owners contributing to the project?
At this point in time, I do not know that a resolution has been, been met uh to the commissioner's satisfaction with the adjoining property owners. I do realize that the adjoining property owners were sold that property, uh given its encroachment into Dorney Plaza. Um, but I'm not sure where they stand at this point.
So how are they moving forward on the pro- I mean, obviously, they're going to benefit tremendously in that area. And the way I understood at last is that the property abuts the door entrance to those properties and they need to get an easement put in place. That's not happened before moving this project forward?
I'm not responsible with managing the, the county's uh responsibilities relative uh to the property owners on Dorney Plaza.
But we are responsible to all know who's got skin in the game and what's going on. So we don't know that. Um, another question-
Wait, 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 wait. I, I don't, I don't know that that's an accurate statement, uh councilwoman, I think.
We, we do know the owners of those properties.
Well, I know we know them. But by this point in the game, I would feel that they should know, we should know, everybody that's part of this project should know what their responsibility is. So if you were a property owner on Main Street, the sidewalk is your responsibility, it's your easement. You snow remove it, you maintain the concrete, and you keep it clear, you put your patio on it.
That's not necessarily true.
It's not, it's not true. You don't, you don't own the sidewalk.
I didn't say you own it. I didn't use those words. I said we maintain it. It's an easement.
You maintain it.
They maintain it. We actually clear the sidewalks in downtown Finley.
In a certain area, and we, we weren't, we weren't originally. That's just through-
It's our contribution for, for in-kind uh with the downtown Finley Improvement District that we committed to several years ago.
And if you, so if you lived on your street and had a sidewalk, and you have the grass, you're responsible for mowing it, snow removal of it. So I, I would like to know, that to me is important to this project. And then the other part is, and maybe this is a question that's hard for me to understand on a lot of people that I've talked to, um. The property is owned by the county and not the city. Uh, there's been a lot of confusion there on that. And my question to you, Mayor-
Well, we, we don't own, um, we own a certain portion of Dorney Plaza.
Up to our section, but the main corridor is-
I'd say there's two main corridors to Dorney Plaza.
Well, the main corridor to Main Street, the project area, the main project.
So we maintain a responsibility and own a portion of the total project.
The majority is owned by the county. The property was originally owned by the city. We swapped the properties for the cube. Is that correct? Several years ago, John?
For the cube?
Correct. That's correct. So-
I don't know that it's a majority of the project.
So the county owns the majority of the property. Okay, so my question to you as the mayor of the city of Finley, if roles were reversed, and we owned the property, or I'm sorry, if roles were reversed, they own as, as the city, if we were only gonna put eighty-five in instead of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, would you expect the county to pick up the remainder of the tab? I mean, would, would you re- I mean, they're making out, they're getting a sweet deal, but would they do that deal for us if the roles were reversed? I just don't think so.
I can't begin to, to even um pretend to know um what the county would do for us if the roles were reversed. What I can tell you is that it is a tale of two completely different um organizations. At the beginning of this project, the community foundation, us and the county commissioners represented by one commissioner, um had indicated at the time that we would split the cost of the project in thirds.
But that's not happening.
As the project has moved along, um it has gone through many different iterations. And at this point in time, we have a project that will um hopefully help commemorate the significant impact that Dale Dorney has had on this community, in a plaza that's worthy of his honor. And this community, the city of Finley, has committed for the last couple of years within our capital plan to do um a significant portion of this project in partnership with the community foundation. I cannot control what the county commissioners can and cannot contribute to this project. What I know is what we've been given. And I'm thankful that the community foundation, even in the decrease of the commitment from the county, has continued to contribute to this project at a very high level. Um, we will benefit. The city of Finley will benefit. Our residents will benefit from a much um more safe environment than what it is now. The bricks are heaving, um it is in total disrepair and has not been touched for twenty-some years. Um, and I think that is, it, it's incumbent upon us um to take care of the things that we own. And at this point in time, uh the county is only able uh to contribute seventy-five thousand dollars to the project. We have decreased the scope and the cost of this project from the very beginning. Um, and I think we, this is something that we can get done as a community and we'll be able to celebrate it together um with, with different partners. As far as the contributions from the adjoining property owners and the easements associated with the plaza, that is out of our control. And um that is something that the county commissioners are responsible for dealing with.
So you feel-
If I was, if the roles were reversed, I would have bonded the project before the private sector work even happened on Dorney Plaza, but that wasn't done. But if it was something that we were managing, that's how we would have taken care of it. And it would have been, you know, it would have been properly accounted for financially.
But you don't have it properly accounted for right now to answer that question?
It's not our responsibility, Holly. It's the county's responsibility. It's not our responsibility. We don't have any skin in the game with regard to the county's uh portion of the plaza.
We have skin in the game on the project, so you're telling me that you-
We do have skin in the game on the project, but we do not have, we do not have responsibility for enforcing whatever property rights the county believes that they have or don't have relative to those property owners. That's not our, that's not our fight. If they would like us-
I don't ask for a fight. I just asked for the information because smart money management is completely understanding this project. And I support improving Dorney Plaza, but I still don't know what the latest design is. Are we to grass? Are we to concrete? Everything keeps changing, and we keep hearing different plans and different numbers. And I'm not against, and, and we did not budget. We planned to put money towards this project. We have not appropriated. That's what we're here for today. But the question is, should we, smart money management-wise, be putting more money into a property that the city does not own? Yes, we want to be a good community partner. Nobody says that we don't want to. It is a, a corridor to our building. But why are we putting in more than the county? And why do you not know who all has skin in this game when we're doing a project? If you, okay, so those are my questions, and I just don't know how I can support something.
First of all, our portion of the project is significantly more detailed um than what the county says at this point. Um, the, the county's portion of the property is, is grass, is a elevated grass area and cherry trees, which will commemorate the relationship that we've had with Japanese companies for almost thirty years. The city's portion of this project is significantly more um enhanced. We have new, um, new pavers going in, new concrete, new drainage, a new place to hold our Christmas tree, new landscaping that will surround the anchors of where the Christmas tree goes up. We will have new lighting. We will have, um, so our, our portion is worth uh our con- our contribution. Uh, the county's portion, which was much more, um, I would say significant than what it is now, is grass and trees. They're taking care of what their responsibility is for.
And who will maintain Dorney afterwards?
That's a conversation that we're having with the county. It's either going to be um our crew, because we obviously are going to have a significant uh amount of more maintenance relative just to the overall downtown landscape. Um, or it will be a partnership with what we have now, which is the Park District. The Park District helps maintain uh the courthouse.
Mr. Webster.
Mayor, I appreciate what you're saying about the plaza needing improved. I don't think anybody debates that. What you were just saying, though, led me to a question. It sounded like you were saying that the uh county's money was going for a specific part and our money's going for another part. Am I correct in that assumption or?
We are all uh in this together, and it's, again, it's not just a, a county project and a city project. The community foundation um is, has contributed or has committed two-hundred-thousand dollars to this project, even um with the extent of the decrease in the scope. So this project was much larger in scope um and in enhancement uh at the very beginning um than what it is now. And so the county, or the, not the county, the community foundation could have actually decreased um their potential investment in this project, but they didn't. Um, we stood firm in what we have been planning for the last couple of years. We've been budgeting an amount. It's been in our capital plan since two thousand fourteen. Um, the community foundation did the same, and the only change here is the scope on the, on the county's portion of Dorney Plaza and their contribution um has decreased. And I, you know, we, we don't control the financial, um, the purse strings of the county. Uh, what we have is a, is a project that I think is worthy um of our contribution.
And again, you just mentioned, I just want to be sure I understand, that you said that the county has reduced their portion of their scope of Dorney Plaza, so not their portion, it's, it's their portion of the whole project, right?
That's right.
Okay.
But the, the property that they own um will look significantly different than what was originally proposed and agreed upon.
No doubt. And I guess you had mentioned uh cherry trees. I saw the original designs that had monuments and it was grand and wonderful, but I take it we're not building that. I've never really heard anything since then as to what this is gonna be. And obviously, I've missed something. Are we, I heard about the papers and whatnot, but beyond that, you know, are we, what else are we including in this?
So if you've noticed that there is, um, I'm fairly certain we've shared this, but if not, um, uh there has been a change in the way that traffic flows uh into Dorney Plaza. And from the time that we did security changes um on the south side of the building here, people have to walk on a four-foot wide side- sidewalk if they don't want to walk in the alley to get into the plaza if you're coming off uh the main, the Crawford Street parking lot. And so we're gonna take down, uh, the plan is to take down the um, the brick wall that exists now, um, enhance Chloe, the statue, if you didn't know, that was the name uh of the beautiful thing that sits up here uh in front of our building. And uh we're gonna do some enhancement to her, uh some additional landscaping, but have an angled approach uh from that alley uh into the plaza that meets with the same angled approach that's gonna be coming off of Main Street. Um, and we did that because of the scope change uh that was necessary with the decrease in the cost of the project uh because of the county's contribution.
Understood.
Um, this will be a much more welcoming and open um walkway into our civic center um than what we have now. Um, it's sometimes difficult to even pass by one person on the four-foot wide sidewalk uh that we have to walk in now. And um there's gonna be some drainage improvements. I don't know if you've ever walked down there when it's pouring down rain or after it has immediately rained. Um, you know, the, the storm uh or the, the gutters that come off the roof um are not tied into the storm sewer. Um, it causes a, a major drainage issue uh within that alley. Uh, we're also gonna be, uh, the, the building owners of uh the backside of those buildings are gonna be making improvements uh to their trash areas um so that um they're better concealed, so that when we get a, you know, thirty, forty mile an hour wind or dumpsters aren't rolling across the plaza and being caught uh by uh Rodney, our maintenance guy. So, you know, overall, um, this project is significantly different uh than what we had originally intended. I think we're doing the best with the allocation of resources that we have. And ultimately, given the changes that are gonna happen to, to downtown Finley with our transportation alternative plan and the continued improvement uh by the private sector, it's only going to enhance uh what we have in the area.
I think the, again, I have no doubt that we need to do something with that. I too, however, struggle with the fact that the county is essentially pulling out of this project. Seventy-five thousand versus their original investments, very little left. And um for a property that we don't own, I have a hard time um approving getting involved in a project, spending two-hundred-and-fifteen plus whatever we're gonna have in labor involved um on a property that we don't own at this point in time, given the other uh party's involvement.
Just for your information, Mr. Murray is here if, if uh anybody has any questions of Mr. Murray. Mr. Russell.
Yes, Mr. Murray, would you by chance have uh drawings of what this property's gonna, or the, the improvements are gonna look like? And also be able to uh indicate on that, on any documents, what is city-owned property versus county-owned?
I, I've got a question, President Slough.
Yes, Mr. Murray.
Well, Mr. Murray's handing that out. Um, I mean, I'm very much in favor of this and it's long overdue. I'm, I think it needs to get done, but I'm curious, in your negotiations or discussions with the county, has anybody talked about adding some of these amenities back in, in years in the future? As money's become available? Because we've pretty much eliminated a lot of the amenities and attributes that made this a pretty classy entryway.
Right.
Now we're down to pretty much bare bones, which kind of irrigates me that the fact that we-
Well, I hope it irritates you. It doesn't irrigate you. I don't know what that would look like, but. You know, the, you know, the, the, the changes that we've seen are really just an evolution of discussions that I feel like it's Groundhog Day and we've been having, and I think I've discussed this before with you. Um, we've, we've continued to have this conversation um for two years now in a small group. It started out with a group of community, um, you know, individuals who um were interested in the beautification uh of the plaza into something that's different uh than what it is today, uh which is a sad sight, to be quite honest, and shame on us for um not maintaining a, a better uh place to where Dale Dorney's uh legacy could be celebrated. Um, but I think really, truthfully, the, the fact of the matter is, we have a tale of two different entities, really. You have one um who um is struggling right now, and um that's why they weren't unable to get um the financial support of all, or the support of all three commissioners. Um, they have other things and other priorities that they want to try and take care of at this point. Um, which, you know, good for them. Um, but the fact is, we, we have um some changes that we would like to make to the plaza in order to properly acknowledge uh the plaza and Dorney for who he was and what he continues to do for this community. And certainly, I wasn't around uh when he made his, his great gift uh to us. But I know we can do better uh than what we have. And I think, you know, back to the comment of, you know, well, you know, we're paying our portion. Well, you know, I think collectively as a group, um, you know, we're getting tremendous value um working together as opposed to doing things on our own. And I think that's the reason why uh we should be moving forward, not necessarily um, you know, be thinking of ways uh to get out of it, because one of our partners um has fallen on hard times and can't necessarily uh provide the funding that we need for it. Um, but we, we, we changed, look, we had a fight pretty hard to, to get more than just a grass patch out on Dorney Plaza, out, out in the, the main entrance. We had a fight for trees, which is like a five-thousand-dollar cost or something like that. I mean, it's very minimal. Um, so, you know, I don't know that there will be a time uh when we can add the really nice seating areas and the water feature and the, the fountain out in front, which is what we were talking about doing.
That's what I was getting at, yes.
Um, you know, maybe someday uh we'll be able to add that to the plaza, uh but that's not uh in the short-term plan at this point.
Hasn't been discussed with the county or anybody else. All right. Thank you.
I've had some serious concerns, many of which have been voiced uh in this meeting. I also see that there are some compelling reasons to do something and to do it now. Uh, the commissioners are gonna have to tear some of the plaza up to deal with their foundation issues. Uh, the community foundation money is predicated on completing this project and uh in time for a fall celebration this year, and with the Main Street project going on, there are some compelling reasons to do this right now. I am concerned that, and I don't know that it's in anybody's fault, it just has happened, that we're kind of backed into a corner. Uh, we've got to make a decision now or in the extremely near future in order to get this accomplished in order to uh avail ourselves of the, the money from the foundation and so forth, and, and the uh the proper plans for a celebration in the fall. I am very concerned with um the fact that the, the finan- the financing involving two entities is not known a little bit more than it is already. Having said that, I was prepared uh two weeks ago uh to vote no on this project. I walked through the project. First time I, I, unfortunately and embarrassingly, not the first time I've really done that in a long while. It is an eyesore. We do need to do, to do something. I, I have serious concerns with the way this has worked itself out, and I don't think it's anybody's fault. It just happened to be that way. But uh the concerns about the money and uh the urgency of approving this uh do concern me very much.
Mr. Monday.
I've thought about this a long time. I've thought about it about all day today at my desk. In one sense, I was gonna vote no, because that would have been the politically correct thing for me to do personally. Because uh by voting yes, I'm going to be put to blame again by some individuals, as I have been in the past. And, but I can take it. Nineteen years I've been on city council, and I never, ever voted one time because it was politically correct for me. I voted what was best for the city, and I'm not gonna quit today. I wrote a little um a statement I'd like to read into the record if I may, Mr. Slough. The current administration, as well as previous administrations, has long talked about revitalizing, revitalizing the downtown area. It's finally happening. If you doubt it, come downtown on a Saturday night and try to find a parking spot on Main Street. I've been a Finley resident all my life. That's seventy-three years. And the downtown is starting to look like the downtown I remember a few decades ago. The centerpiece is Dorney Plaza, which with some help can become a showplace for downtown visitors, or can be left to further deteriorate. We have an opportunity to work with the county and leverage two-hundred-thousand dollars from the community foundation to make the plaza a gathering place for people and events that we can be proud of. If we were in financial straits and laying off safety forces and other city employees, I would oppose any expense like this. But we're fortunate not to be in that position. Also, it was said that we're helping the business, businesses adjacent to the plaza. The same thing could be said, it's said every time we do a major street, a curb or other enhancement adjacent to a business, such as the TAP project, which will start soon. When we do that, it's gonna look nicer, it's gonna help the business. Should we not do it because we're helping a business? I don't think so. I'm in favor of this project, uh and it will make downtown something that we can all become proud of. And I think it, it ought to be happening. The question was brought up, well, who owns, who owns the property? When visitors come downtown, from out of town or even within town, and they see that property, they make an assumption, that's a city's property, and look how terrible it looks. So I think we need to make it look nice, regardless of who owns it. Make it look nice, and let's do what's good for the downtown and what's good for the city. Thank you.
Jerry, on the uh document you presented, can you do you have a sense as to where the uh, the city property or the, what is considered the city's responsibility, if you had to split it in, into sections?
The actual property line is basically this line here, which is just west of the properties that we currently occupy and west of the courthouse. If you see this line where my finger is, that's the demarcation. Everything west of that line is city property. Everything east of that line is county property.
And that extends how far, Jerry?
Well, it extends to this line, which is the city right-of-way line. So they own, they own from that right-of-way to this property line, and you own all the way into your, into and through your building.
Sure, but uh how about north?
You go to the, the dark line you see behind the monument. Okay?
Thank you.
On the north side, yeah.
North side of the monument. So those are the, the dash, double dash-
North side, yeah.
North side of the monument. So those are the, the dash, double dash lines are property lines.
Okay, arch- architect question for you. What's the significance of the angle? You know, so you have the red lines that are kind of offsetted, and is that just because it is, or?
We, we just were trying to give it some interest. Again, we're meeting a five-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-dollar budget. We were trying to um make an enhancement on the property by just simply levying it at a right angle to the property. We thought it was dull. Um, we also had to avoid Chloe. We were trying to save, at one time in the old plan, we were moving Chloe, which was costing money. And with some risk to Chloe, so we decided to leave Chloe and answer, those are the images you see that I, on top of this, we're putting a seat wall. So to do that, if I left it straight, we would be like walking through Chloe. So we angled it a bit. That brings the attention of the entrance way to the words that says Southgate. That was, that's in direct line with the alley that comes in, on the parking lot, so that's your new entrance into that area. By angling the other way, we were able to give you more grass area, which we can use for events and other activities. We thought it was pretty interesting to have the two, actually three rows of cherry trees. That gives some, some color and scale to the property in the springtime and honors our guests, I mean, our, our neighbors. So um we just thought it, it gave us some interest without cost, basically. The, the stone wall that you see that has Dorney Plaza written on it, there's a, a stone tablet in the front, which is sandstone to match the courthouse. And there's another one on this municipal city lot in this location, um also again of sandstone. The base of Chloe will be sandstone, and we have some other benches that we're bidding as alternates to have those be sandstone as well. Again, trying to blend between, the pavers of the plaza will be a brick paver that'll have a color that will be um complimentary to the municipal building, whereas the sandstone will be complimentary to the county building. So we're trying to blend those two together to, to make a, a pleasant plaza for you.
So there is a couple benches, or you're meaning the bench, the setbacks, when you say the word bench? There are no seating?
There, there's no uh seating on any property, on other parts, other than Chloe is the one that's in the base bit. The ones, the other benches that were stone benches, as you see on the, uh, well, you don't see that one. Um, we're bidding as an alternate, to see if we can afford anymore.
The county, um, just for perspective, uh was not interested in having benches um in Dorney Plaza. They didn't necessarily want people accumulating uh next to the courthouse.
I mean, I mean, this is simple commentary, but if, if the, if the desire is to not have anybody next-
That's why there aren't, that's why they're not in there.
If, if the desire is to not have anybody next to the courthouse, uh why don't we build a fortress someplace?
Grant, I am on your side here. This is Ben and, you know, Jerry and Tom Malarky. Um, and this group of people have been having this conversation for two-plus years. And from my perspective, this is our home. This is the people's home. This is our, our city's home, um, our community's home. But, you know, they have concern, can, security concerns. Um, you know, so what we've done, what you see here, is a product of, smile, Jerry, it's okay. It's, it's a product of several iterations-
Understood.
Whereby several different individuals have commented, particularly at the county level, about um, you know, what they like to see, what their concerns are relative to security. I mean, before we did this, we had to do a court security um assessment over at Common Pleas Court. Um, so, you know, there, this plan looked a lot different um at first blush. Um, it is accommodating the wishes of those and all the feedback that we've gotten from, um, from those um at the county level that wanted it basically, uh, at, at one point, basically what was brought to us about a month ago was just a big green grass patch. And from our perspective, we thought it was worth more than that uh to this community.
Jerry, what is the lighting plan? Or what?
I don't have that ch-
So there is no lighting in the five-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand?
Yes, ma'am, there is. Um, I just don't have that in front of you.
Is it still the road?
No.
No.
No, that went away. Um, we have pole lights, what you, what you see called Dorney Plaza, we have post lights that go um down to that path that lights the path in some of the, the common area of the grass. We have a row of lights that grow on the east side of the Southgate Boulevard into there. We have lights on the Dorney Plaza sign, we have the, on both Dorney Plaza signs. We have lights at the base of Chloe. If you leave here tonight and see the big light on Chloe, it'll be lit again. So it's not a sculpture in the dark. It'll be still attractive. We have lights on the major trees to give uplighting to the trees as well, so they look very attractive. As you see, the 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 monument that's at the north of the Dorney Plaza area, we're landscaping that, we're taking the concrete away. Giving it some softness. There'll be two cherry trees on that location as well. Um there'll be three cherry trees around uh Chloe statue and then eleven cherry trees down the Dorney Common area. But uh I we feel it's very well lit without being obnoxious, it's not a little like a car lot. But uh we do have residents who sleep nearby and we have residents who want to be safe too. So we have a good balance of light in that plaza.
I wanna commend Jerry your work and Don your work on this. I know it's been a lot of time, it's exceptionally frustrating. I have no doubt. But now, I guess I'm even more frustrated because we're making allowances to this project for the county, for what they want and what they need, but yet they've cut the funding out from underneath it and we're gonna take this project, fund the majority of it and not get what we want. Now that to me is, that's disturbing. We're paying money and we're gonna get a project that the county wants and they're putting eighty-five grand in it, eighty-seven, whatever it is. If we were to take your property line, Jerry, that you pointed out and spend all of our money inside that square, I would vote for that tonight and let the county deal with their problems. Understand that is not a possibility, Lydia, but this is ridiculous.
You you and I, um like a month ago, I said draw a line and we'll just make our part really pretty and but that's not how we do this.
I understand that. I understand that, but this just takes even more. The more we talk about it, the madder I get.
You've just been dealing with it for a few months, imagine.
Can Don address some of the financial issues?
You know, like Jerry and everyone else here, we are extremely frustrated with the process that's we've been working on this for two and a half years. And uh I too am disappointed uh that the county uh was unable to fund uh what they had initially indicated they were gonna be able to participate in. But I think the compelling reason for me uh and and I would like you to consider in going forward with this is that when you, even if you slice and dice the numbers, the amount of work that would be done on city property the amount of work that would be done on county property as percentages. The amount of your contribution is a lower percentage than that percentage of work to be done. And why is that? Because we have the community foundation participating in this project. They will only participate in this project if we do it together. So if you, while I I wish and want would like the county to fund more than they did, that we're able to. It's imperative that we do this with community foundation participation because it's gonna cost you more to do exactly what you talked about, Jeff. Um as far as to do it on your own. If you wanna do just the portion on your own, it will cost you more because the community foundation won't be a part of it. That to me is a compelling reason for doing it now from a from a money standpoint.
Don, whereas they're there, so they were specifically contingent that the whole project, which would include both the city and county property?
Yes, absolutely, because we approached that with them. We 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 looked at uh should we divide this up and 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 do it through uh with the city and city alone? That was not part of their scope. It was not part of what they look at the overall plaza to represent. And the infield was with uh uh honorary enough uh for the namesake Dale Dorney. So they wouldn't support that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Don, um just to clarify a couple things for you from my perspective. I agree there's an urgency because we have an opportunity there. Um I don't think voting against it's a political thing. Um I, what I'm uncomfortable with is we haven't gone to bid yet either, I mean for formal bids, correct?
That's correct.
And so we don't have the hard numbers yet. I mean that the hardest thing is to justify property. We don't, it's like me saying, hey, Don, let me go take care of your front yard and we'll fix it up because we don't like the way your yard looks and it represents our community. And this is count- that's how people look at it. That's how I look at it. It's not our property, but we want to be a team player. And it and we can't slice and dice it, that doesn't work. Um we do get the benefit from the county. What can we do to keep this moving forward and allow us to still get our numbers and get the true detail? Cause like just discussing tonight, the lighting has changed, the trees have changed. We as council don't know that. The last design we saw was string lights and concrete and then the budget numbers. We it's like we don't truly know what we're voting for. Uh you could, I mean, we say we want to do this, we want to be a team player and it is an entrance to our property. But it's not, we need to remember, it's not our property. And the commissioners although, you know, they don't wanna put benches in and stuff, unfortunately, the society we live in today, those are some stupid things we have to consider. Um but their reasonings for not fully funding it is because they needed to put money somewhere else in public safety or whatever in the county and we still have to juggle all those numbers too every day because you know, I'll bring up the drug thing. I mean, we hear about that every day. So we need to be responsible in what we're putting into it and be able to explain it. I guess that's what I need. I need to be able to explain to somebody when they come up to me as a councilperson and say, what's in here? Cause last I thought we were gonna try to put some benches in, places for people to eat or stop and sit down. And we can't do that. And then we heard trees and we really need as council to know the project inside and out, know what we're paying for, know why we're doing it and how we can justify it. And I and we don't have the bids yet, so what can we do to justify it to the community? That we wanna be a team player, even though the county is not taking care of their own property at the full amount because they're looking at other parts, which we need to as well. So is there something we can do to move forward? Can we appropriate the eighty-five thousand and match them while we wait to get our numbers back and a final, absolute final design? Uh cause we don't. I mean, we really don't have a final design, right? I mean, last time I heard it was six hundred and some thousand.
This is the final design, this is what the community foundation
This is it. Lights aren't gonna change, benches aren't gonna change.
This is what the community foundation agreed to fund.
Okay, well, I hadn't seen this until tonight. The last one I saw was different, so.
I can offer a historic perspective for this council if they're interested. And what that would be, and I'd I'd urge Mr. Malarky and Mr. Murray to speak up if it would cause a problem. In the past, when you bid projects like this as a council body, perhaps uh um Mr. Monday and Mr. Slough will remember. This body would initially pass the 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 design and the desire in concept and approve the administration to go out and get those bids in a very timely fashion with the caveat that they would come back a second time for the appropriation. Now, the purpose of it was to avoid a situation like we have today. In doing that, you don't normally go forward with the bid and request for the bids unless it really is the majority's intention to do the project. And it sounds like this body likes the idea of improving Dorney Plaza. I don't think there's anybody that doesn't like that idea. My question would be if they took that type of approach and could be, could it be done timely enough to allow you to get the project done? Allow this body to approve it so that their constituents are satisfied? And yet at the same time, do a final approval of the full appropriation uh in one of the couple future meetings for in the very near future.
I would say that that's an accurate, um you know, that's a fairly accurate historical perspective. However, we are not managing this project. We are one of three entities who are contributing um who are contributing to the development of this project. Um the Hancock Regional Planning Commission is the contracting entity that's taking funds from all three um all three groups, so um we have done that with projects that we are in um full control of. Um but but not uh for this particular project and we've made um you know, there there are alternates in the bid that we're taking a look at um for, you know, potential additional cost savings and Jerry um you can speak speak to that.
What I would like to speak to, the bids are on the street, first notice the bid is went into paper today. The bids are due on April twentieth, which is a Thursday night. We're go- we're Thursday afternoon. We're gonna open those bids, review those bids. It was our intention to be able to present to you at your council meeting on April twenty-fifth the final results of those bids and which alternates we're proposing to accept and not accept. On that same day, there's a a county commissioners meeting. We are planning to be on their agenda to say bids are in, this is what has happened. We have a committee made up of city, county, regional planning, downtown merchants, whatever that serve this part. Don Malarky's on that, that has helped to guide the process to make sure we had everything included. We will review those, review those together. Um and then we can come back again to to present those to you. In the meantime, if you would like to go through page by page with us, we'd be happy to present those if you wish and show you the alternates, show you the reasons. I would say I would like you, we did show you a grand vision, but that grand vision was a million dollars. And it was obvious we didn't have that money then, so we had to reduce our vision a bit. But don't think that this is a poor boring solution. This is a very nice improvement to downtown planning. Uh we have quality materials, we're doing permeable pavers, we're doing new lighting. Um there'll be new drainage below this plaza. We're taking care of utility issues, we're taking care of a lot of electrical issues. We have irrigation bid as an alternate. It's a very good project for you within five hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. So um we're happy to review that with you if you wish. Um but I dare say if you change things and keep changing things on me, we get delayed. I have to be done by September fifteenth or I miss the planning season. If I bid in this time and I say contractor, go May one, count the months. I don't have a lot of time left to make this happen.
The community foundation is insistent on meeting um the deadline, which is to, you know, commemorate um the anniversary of the fund and um you know, the other thing I would just say is this, um this project is consistent uh with the way that we've done things over the last five years. Um we don't do them independently. Uh when we do large scale community projects like this, we do them with one another. Um and this is a perfect opportunity to leverage dollars. Um you know, our dollars with county dollars and the generous contribution of the community foundation. Um if we delay any further um and it's it's not your fault uh that we are um in the situation uh that we were in, but the scenario is such that it's time for us to get moving. I think anybody can walk out these doors and figure out that we need to make some change uh out front and it's our responsibility because we own a portion of this plaza. The county owns the the other portion and I think that this plan um will be a significant improvement from what we have today.
A couple of us would just kinda whispering back and forth. You say you're you're gonna ha- you'll you'll get the bids on the uh twentieth of April?
I messed up. You you mean on the eighteenth.
On the eighteenth of April?
Right.
Okay, well, either one. The thought was, I'd like to see the bids too. If we tabled this and then you presented us with the with the bids and what you have, can you get the bids if we tabled this? Can you go through with your process?
So
I can't bet you're misrepresenting.
Right, so we can move forward the process, but the other thing to keep in mind here is that we wanted to do the demo of the plaza two weeks ago because we still have things for our street department that they need to get done. Um and if we do it now or within the very near future of now, if you say yes tonight, we could start, you know, in the next couple of days. If we wait, then we have to reallocate our resources um within the street department. So waiting on um you know, for another month before we can get started is only gonna delay uh the project even further.
I and Don clarified this for me. I I I believe publicly we cannot advertise something that is not funded. Is that not true?
Didn't you just say when you ran the ad today?
That's that's not, that's not true, but.
I've been receiving them, but maybe not true. I'm sorry, forgive me.
Don, is there a way we can amend the ordinance to make sense to what Ron is saying? Because we've all, haven't we, we've budgeted for the funds, can we not make the ordinance say like a resolution that we are budgeting for it contingent on bids coming in with review from cap? Isn't there something you can do that would? Cause I I think, you know, the mayor says we've done it this way for five years and I think we're at least where I am as a councilperson, I wanna have more involvement and see things and see the numbers and understand it. So I can explain it and and we haven't necessarily always had that. So is there a way we can make that a resolution for like what Ron is saying? That they can move forward with bids and then we could always suspend the rules on the twenty-fifth? Or pull it off the table, the original ordinance off the table on the twenty-fifth and pass it? Oh, that eighteenth were were bids were due, but council was the twenty-fifth. Oh, that eighteenth were were bids were due, but council was the twenty-fifth. Oh, the council's the eighteen. So the same day, the eighteenth bids are coming in the eighteenth and we have Well, I thought he just said it was the
Mr. President, do we have a motion on the table? I'd like to, I'd like to call for the question then. No, we have a motion to adopt. I'd like to call for the question.
We need to vote for that.
We did do roll call though.
All those all those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Jim, one order. I mean, I've been asking to to uh make comments. I I Don, I'm sorry, on the parliamentary, he can he can call the question. Is that a is a is a call of the uh question a uh motion that needs, is that a is that a vote? Cause I'd still like to make make comments. Or does that, does his uh call of the question stop all co- all uh discussion?
Well, you got motion to motion to adopt, is that what you got?
Yes.
All all withdraw, let's just call the question. Okay, let's go.
Ms. Freshy?
Nay.
Mr. Harrington?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Monday?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer? Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker?
Reluctantly, aye.
Mr. Watson?
Aye.
And Mr. Wobser?
Nay.